Alright, so we're ready whenever you are, Bill.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna call the order to this not-so-very-public meeting of the Towne and Plan Commission. And we'll be the stalwart initial group to go through this material and, to the extent we think it makes sense, give highlight the high points to the rest of our group next time and maybe you involve in it.
So I'll start off looking at the agenda. The first discussion I had is, of course, the up-and-coming literature rent for the Beck property and Plan Commission. So the dates I was able to secure our location with the Saturday, Monday, Tuesday combination was May the 20th. And I have it currently made in 2023, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. There's gonna be different statements of the presentation, which an agenda will come out prior to the meetings. Currently, I have made in 2023, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And that's gonna be located at the American Legion of Prospect Road. I was unable to get the reception call with the fire departments. They had basically, when spring starts, they start booking up every Saturday at weekends. And then subsequently, on May the 22nd, 2023, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the American Legion as well. And then May the 23rd, 2023, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. and then 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And again, the agenda for that will be forthcoming, probably, hopefully, 30 days in advance of this meeting, so we can get it out to the public, get the property signed, so we can get notifications to people that they're aware of the public hearing, the public, you know, public charrettes. And to have the knowledge, again, I think the deal between us to sort of come up with, you know, Saturday hours to get people that were available on the weekend but not during the week, and then also try to hit that, you know, evening, and even a late evening, at 10:00, 10:00 p.m.
Just out of curiosity, did any of you attend the charrette that we conducted for the downtown master plan ever? Yeah, it was, first it was impressive how many, how many local citizens showed up, okay? And the quality of the discussion, and everybody was doing a charrette for the first time. And it was very, very worthwhile, very compelling.
Yeah, and I think, I think the intentions of this rep is to take some feedback from the citizens immediately and actually do sketch plans, very similar to what they did on the vision plan. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out of this meeting. So anyway, so, you know, back to our calendar and our scheduled dates. As you noticed, May 22nd, 2023, is the Plan Commission meeting. So this is the dilemma. Do we still hold a Plan Commission meeting on that night? Or do we want to be involved as Plan Commission at, at the charrette that evening, the 22nd? Again, that is 6:00 to 10:00 on the 22nd. So of course, we could have an hour before our meeting to be able to attend the charrette. You know, we can still have a representative or one commission member possibly there. Or if, as a commission, we want to postpone this meeting. And again, we don't have to postpone this 22nd meeting. We could do that easily at the 27th Plan Commission meeting. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that conclusion.
Could we, since Beck is so important, and I'm just wondering, we should all focus on Beck while we can for the charrette, since it's only those three days? And then, is it possible to do our meeting the next night, or is this hall booked?
The next night, you wanted the Tuesday.
Oh, sorry, it's both days, isn't it?
We're, yeah, it's two days.
Yeah.
So you mean working Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
That's a bit too much. No, but you're right, we need to focus on that.
Wait, okay, so what's the next?
And so then, if you look at the calendar, the 29th is Memorial Day, right? I think so. So it just, it's compounding, right? So what happens is, you know, where do we fit that Plan Commission meeting in? Is it one in May? Maybe there's not. I, I will say that because of my sickness, I have elected to postpone my surgery that was supposed to occur this coming Wednesday. Because I'm still under the weather and going under anesthesia is not healthy, not healthy, going into surgery. So, so I've temporarily postponed that, not sure whether the specifics will. Yeah, so that, I, I will still be here for the other meetings in March and April. So the big question is, is, again, we can discuss this in the 27th Plan Commission meeting as well. I just wanted to sort of get out in the forefront, that people know the conclusion and then also how we might add to. You know, it might be the beginning of April, we, you know, forego the work session and we have a, maybe abbreviated Plan Commission meeting the first Thursday of the month in April. That would be, I would think, the great alternative. Thank you.
Do you need that?
No, actually, yes, because here, I'm sorry.
So like, May 4th is that first Thursday?
Or, or even June, I guess it could be June, but then we're getting into summer meetings, so I'm just, I, I, I'm not sure what the answer is.
Well, let's, let's see what we can get done tonight and how we feel about, about that and our understanding of material and if we feel like we can catch up the rest of the, of the commission.
And the sad thing is, is that we're, we're getting really close between meetings, right? So, you know, it's really, there's a lot of, there are only four weeks between each meeting, that are getting very close together. And if we have that charrette inside there, but anyway, I just wanted to sort of get everybody on page with that.
Alright, so you clarified the potential dates, and we did have a location. It took us to find it.
Yes.
Most of the, most of the places we use are thought of, taken.
Yeah, so hopefully, we are passed on in at the Legion currently. I just need to get back to that, to speak to the developer via email to see if he wanted to present anything tonight or be present. And he said that, you know, he was very disappointed that it was moved to May, but that hopefully we could ratify that date. Which I think we're gonna move forward with May the 22nd and 23rd. And we'll start, I'll start generating an agenda and what that program's gonna look like. So we'll get that in place. I'll secure the date with the deposit with the American Legion. And then, you know, on that respect too, I'll also talk to CMC. And I'm not sure if it'd be necessary to have them there during recording, because we're, think about it, we're gonna have four separate tables with other poster boards around the room. I'm not sure what kind of coverage they even be able to give us over that three-day period. And I, I don't know if it's a necessity to have that. You know, we might be able to still do some standalone footage, possibly, and be, and post one to the website, I think, might be adequate. We might be able to do, I have a Steadicam I could utilize where I could walk around between different stations. So again, these are all, I, I don't, I don't know if we should request their, their assistance with recording. But unless, unless the Plan Commission feels that it's necessary.
Was CMC involved with the downtown master plan?
They were not. They were not.
Yeah, John, on that score, I would think that, you know, the 20th and the 22nd, those are essentially like Park 1A, Park 1B. They're the similar agendas, et cetera, just held, held on two different times, as Steve suggested during the last meeting. I would think if there's any televising, there will be opportunities to try to gather that on the last.
22nd.
Yeah, because I kind of sense that there's going to be, at some point, Cecily, is her name, I think? I got an impression Cecily's gonna give, and maybe alongside Mr. Wagner, some kind of outbrief, kind of overall. Our pin-ups now have resulted in these kind of overall changes, is that fair? And so that, that ought to be kind of captured, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, because the first two days, I think, we should just kind of leave it open for everybody, just, hey, let's start writing.
There's a lot of energy.
Let's move this right on, you know, you can't, we're not gonna capture. But yeah, we write the last, the last kind of, once we put it all together and what kind of is coming out of that, I think we can capture that.
August the 7th to 9th, or the 23rd, which is more the presentation.
Yes.
I think that's probably just.
So I'll, I'll be in contact within this coming week, and we'll discuss about that. And if they're unable to facilitate, then I'll do something with these cameras that we can easily project up onto the board and be able to have something we can stream that to anybody. Which goes on our permanent Facebook page, you said, so.
So I'd like to go ahead and move us into actually getting started on this. John, what, what thoughts did you have with less than the full commission? The best way to approach this type of form of work?
Again, I do want to hit a couple maps really quickly, because these are critical for Carroll County. So if you go to your last map in your booklet, which is the proposed street, street systems, it's the one that's up on the trajectory as well. So when you look at this map, you know, I see a couple items that I think need to be modified. And we'll look at area number one, for example. You know, the alignment of Beck is not correct. You know, it doesn't come back down to a hook, it's straight up from Beck Drive to Center Street. I think that should be revised. I also want to see where the number three is. That alignment of the connection to Wooderville, creating bypasses, it would be sort of, should be more aligned with Century Drive, because it'll be, it'll be a perpendicular intersection, and it won't come into the middle, right in the middle of the farm. Right now, it's going through the barn and the house. And so, so that line will be moved to where item number three is designated. Back towards more of the middle of Wooderville Road and alignment with Century Drive, it'll be extended. And the one that they're really questioning is number four. I mean, it says here, it's a new road to interconnect new development between North Main Street and Maryland 27th. So the question is, is do we still want to maintain this connection? And this is sort of coming out of the townhouses that are off of Main Street. You know, and creating a connection, so whoever were to develop these parcels in here, they would be responsible for putting this proposed road in. Is this still a road that we want to have a connection to? Do we want to still have this connection heading out of this, out of the, out of the apartments or the townhouses there? Going through a piece of land that is not in corporate limits, for one thing. And then back into the corporate limits along the end of Park Street.
Does that road literally just run next to the 27th proposed road?
It is, it'll be parallel with 27th. I don't see the real need for it.
Like a service road?
No, it would have to be a, it'd have to be a full, full road. So whoever came in to do development, if somebody came in to improve this, improve one of the parcels that are under development currently, they would be responsible for providing that proposed road to meet town standards, be it a boulevard or whatever it would be. It would be a two-lane road with sidewalk and shoulders and. So again, the question is, and this is really, Carroll County's the one I brought up to me, is this something we still want to have on our master plan, this connection? And again, it's supposed to provide, so if, let's say Main Street's closed, then, well, see, that, that's the difficult part, right? So the one thing, if we had, as you look to the north or the west one, too, you know, that's a continuation of Rising Ridge Road to reach to Camden Street. That creates that bypass around Main Street. Currently, we don't really have a true bypass around Main Street downtown. So I don't know really what the thought was, and Bill might be able to speak to this, what the thought was of this connection number four.
I don't, maybe I was asleep when we were previously discussing it. I don't remember this, and I'm hard-pressed to see how it adds or it helps our arrangement. Remember, we're, we're a rich road community, and the difficulty is getting up to that and, and down. So almost the vast majority of our traffic and our ability to get from one place to another is north-south. It's not east-west. We don't have, it is so much harder to go east-west, given this, this arrangement. So I just don't see where adding, this seems like it's, it's just another north-south when we've already got efficiently and good money.
Right, and we have, again, so, you know, with the Green Tree Development, there won't be an extension of, trying to think of the name of that road, the development ends there, it won't continue on with the Green Tree property, because it was taken out of the master plan. Yeah, I, I don't see the desire or the need for this. Now, not to say that when, if a plan comes in and is developed through our Plan Commission, that we can't require a road, or say, we want a road, we want connectivity, we want some kind of connection between here to there. The biggest hurdle is, if you look right where the red line starts, our corporate limits comes down and around and comes back up. So it doesn't even, you know, it's never come through and get developed in the county, which it probably wouldn't, because state and I, we, it'd be difficult to get access to the 27th there.
Absolutely.
You know, will that ever come into the town? Possibly, you know. It probably will, if Harris this year comes in, we'll have to probably bring that in, because we would be creating a lot of play, an island inside of corporate limits, which is in our building. But anyway, so, so.
It's kind of like, it's not a problem until it is, right? Because we don't have anything happening there that would require a road right now, but someone else might need it at some point, and then it's maybe their problem.
Yeah, and, and, so, right, so if it's a, if it's a proposed collector's street or a proposed street, if your property, if your developing property, just for example, the Beck property, right? They're coming in and they're developing potentially, right, with their, with their project. They have to provide a connection from Center Street to Century Drive to Beck Drive, because they're shown on this plan. They're shown on as a, as a planned major street within the corporate limits.
Yeah, I don't think we would have done this in this form.
What's that?
I mean.
They're removing number four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know if removing number four is really detrimental to us.
Was, was it, I don't think it was, but was it called out in the Rock 27 quarter study of 2017?
Probably not.
Probably not.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a road.
And that was a pretty extensive study, and I don't recall this being called out. I'd say, absent that body of work to say there's a rationale or a need for that road, I'd say, you know, eliminated.
And I guess, you know, in that respect, without having a full body here, we do have, you guys, we're not voting on it, but we need to, at least, I would want to give Carroll County direction on that we're, you know, we don't see the need for it. Again, in 10 years, maybe it is a need, I don't know.
That's the only connection I don't see that makes sense. All the other ones make sense.
Sure.
You know, yeah, that makes, we do need that route, we do need that route.
Right.
I just don't even see what that course of that is, so.
It's to get a back way into whatever development is there, you know. That would be the only, and it creates a secondary entrance to that, that townhouse development. So if there was something right up in the, in the main street, fire apparatus, it had to get into that development.
But if there, if somebody actually puts in the build in that area, they're gonna have to connect to those houses.
Right.
Wouldn't matter for the road.
And again, then there's that big piece of land that isn't even in the town.
Yeah.
You know, so, this, this one over eight by four, that property was developed, and they have a road. It would go nowhere, because we don't know, you know, that other parcel wouldn't be getting developed. And we wouldn't be making it to do off-site improvements.
Did we talk about taking that piece into the town this time? We didn't?
So I just wanted to sort of get some direction from you all, if you felt this was necessity or not, or.
I'll say it's not.
I don't see.
I'm already there. I don't see it. I, I don't, I think we all feel to do that the same way.
Yes, it's not.
I will speak with Heather on Monday. I'm gonna tell Hannah that I'll give her guidance on Monday. But I will talk to Hannah to see if she recalls any reason why that was taken. So.
Alright.
Alright, so it's number four, potentially. So it's really up to you, Bill, if you want to look at the maps first, or if you want to get into chapter four. With, with less people here than we normally have, I'm not sure which way you feel. Of course, we're not citizens, but, you know, when we come to this, you know, it's advertised and it's out there.
I've gone through this, I don't know.
You went through the maps, as I was saying.
Three or four times.
What's that again, Bill?
I've gone through this at least three or four times. I'm wondering, I found it of some help to, under land use zoning and community vision, to take these, these areas, and there is a map with it, and it shows, it shows the parcel report.
Which page?
I found it helpful, 72, 71, starting at 71.
And it looks like these are all the properties that were done last time.
So this is 2012, 2013 time.
Right, so we.
Yes.
Bill?
And, and you can even see, not to jump in here, Bill, but for instance, like on page, there's one entry in here with regard to the Beck property. Page 79, and page 79, and so you see there as an example.
Yes.
It's, that section now starts a title, rezoning request not supported, and it lists everything. And at the bottom, so what this section is now at the end of all these maps is 2013 kind of tally of all the rezoning that was requested but didn't go forward. And you can see, you know, specific to that, you know, there's nothing in there with MSD. I didn't see anything in here with regarding Green Tree, I'm sure you see.
Well, again, I'm not even sure, this information, of course, is the previous version.
Correct, correct.
Some of this information isn't even gonna be in there, because it's either been rezoned, or there's gonna be new data of the ones who have come in and asked for rezonings. And then what I recommend, recommendation, will be going to town council with that, so. Again, some of these might still be in here, but some of these will probably not be.
Just, just a quick question, since I kind of focused on Beck and that section, re zoning requests not supported, is that a necessary element of our master plan to say what didn't go through a rezoning approval? And if the answer is yes, then I said, that's okay, but do we have any examples of that in the update? So in the past year or two, do we, do we have any rezoning requests that weren't supported in the update of that section?
Yeah, so there were, there were a few that were, came in front of the body that were not recommended for rezoning. A prime example was, you know, again, this hasn't been forward to plan, to the town council for approval, but ultimately, Hoppin Builders out of Wooderville and 27th, he was asking for community commercial. And I was stating that, I think we decided that, I think the end result was that if he were to get a rezoning on this property, that potentially could be NP. I understand it's right on the corner of a major intersection, but there's, everything around it is residential or a school.
Well, we were concerned about proximity of schools.
Correct, so, again, he is running a business out of the existing residence, which is there already, you know. What's the right, what's the right zone for that property?
Where he could run it with NP?
That's what I just said.
Yeah. He's already running it with.
Well, he has, he has, he has a non-conformity use, residential, so he can continue doing that. It's just that if he sells the property technically, that use should be stricken, and it should go back to its base zone, which is R8 yet. And so, and again, it is in a location where it's kind of like Dr. Brown's, same thing when it came through the Plan Commission. And it's coming back to us again.
That is.
On the, on the 27th, for the, coming in with a change or mistake again, the same thing. So it's, again, he's requesting CC in a parcel that's surrounded by residential, even though there's a use on the other side of the street, which is.
Park Avenue.
Well, I'm not letting, talking about that.
Oh, Park Avenue.
Um, which is a pretty intense use, but it has a special exception with the REs to allow that. Because as a government building, they can be wherever they want to be, right? So, so.
And Mr. What's in that, as a compromise?
I'm not sure. You know, again, that's, that was my recommendation as well there, was that it should be NP. If it's gonna be rezoned, then it'd be NP, because then it creates a buffer between the residential and more intense use, that's what he's playing across the street. But, you know, usually the road divides zones a lot of times, so.
But again, your topic is kind of keen to the whole discussion of transitional zone.
That's what we're trying to get to as a body, is my understanding, is what you guys are trying to.
You're all too NP-less now.
Right, exactly, and it's probably in here, right? Well, so he has a residential, well, he was asking for a commercial, and again, it was a, no, it's supported.
On that same page.
Right, here's six Park Avenue. So again, there, and there's Hoppin Builder too, right? So they had a R2, it had to be, I thought it was R8, but R2, and they were asking for community commercial, and it wasn't supported. So yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of challenging. Twenty Park Avenue.
Where is that?
79, oh, oh.
Twenty Park Avenue, that is actually, I think, I think it's, as you're heading out Park Avenue, on the right there, there's a small property, I think, that might be the DTZ. I think that it's residential, and they wanted a community commercial. I think it's up above State Farm Insurance, I think. I'm not positive, I don't have to look into that.
We're all showing the municipal one, there's a little.
It's a little.
Looked like a car garage.
Yeah, it looks like it was an old, single-car garage.
Yeah.
I think it's an mental health facility currently, or some type of therapies.
The map says Donovan's painting. It's perfect, I thought, my signal's not great in here, so.
But, but to kind of wrap, wrap up this, all of these pages that Bill pointed us to, you're gonna be doing an update.
Exactly, because again, I'll have to, you know, if anything was in here, it's really old news. So whatever was brought to us as part of the master plan rezoning request that was sent out to everybody here to submit, I have it down on my blank board, all the properties, what you guys had recommended, which will be going to the town council for final approval. And again, they can, at that point in time, either take your recommendation or formulate their own recommendation for that parcel.
Now, to your knowledge, are there any other locations, any other parcels, any other?
That were.
Requests that, that it comes maybe just to you as opposed to?
I think that brought, every request that was presented to me, I brought to the Plan Commission as a board to determine what you felt. Now again, the, the ones on South Bean are, you know, I'm not sure where, I think a lot of those were sort of on the fence, on like, should it be CC or LC or where should it be NP? I, I proposed what I thought was the right solution, which was, again, when you have, when you have such a small parcel, you know, creating that small parcel for CC creates a problem, because, you know, with the type of use, you don't have enough land to support the building, plus your parking, so, you know.
It's buffer.
Right, and so, you know, I. Right, and so, you know, I, I feel like, you know, the vast majority of property might be a good use for CC, I mean, it is. Very long Southview, it is very long twenty-seven, and very long South Main. Does somebody really wanna build a house in that location? There's likely not. Not to say they couldn't, but, you know, so, and then all the other parcels that are down along South Main, you know. On the left side and both on the right side, you know, maybe they all should be LC. And then there's one parcel between the residential and then LC, that should be NP, to create that stagger. But then when you look at the next property up, which is right by the circle, those two parcels are currently zoned LC. So, you know, so, what, what is the right answer? You have to kinda look at the whole parcels, or all the parcels holistically. And say, you know, what is the right answer here? We don't wanna have commercial LC and the, LC NP, you know, it's like, you wanna have something that's consistent and fluid. You don't wanna have a spot sitting as it would become if you had, you know, CC, LC, NP, CC elevation.
Not everybody flew into that, that, that property.
Right, but it doesn't mean that they can't still be rezoned, even though they didn't request the rezoning, it doesn't mean they can't. Not that the town council can still rezon that property, you know, it doesn't matter, and, and not that they can't continue doing their use there. Because it's less intense use than, you know, LC.
But, but you know something, as a kind of a pat on the back, John, everything you just said, we oughta kinda try to, if everybody's in agreement with what you said, and that is. We oughta try to capture that as one of the thrusts in the beginning of this section, I think. The considerations for whatever you wanna call it, transitional rezoning, or to enable, you know. Better staggered zoning that makes sense, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
But, the picture you painted, I'm trying to think of just, and I'll continue, trying to think of kind of a bumper sticker that captures that, because I think everybody's agreeable to it.
It, it's, it's challenging, I mean, to make sure that we're creating that. Zones that are fluid with each other, and that we're not creating hiccups in the system, you know, and again, I know it's difficult, because we have. Some discrepancies in our zones currently where we have buffers required some places, but not other places, and.
Industrial residential nice to each other.
Right.
Once again.
That we have industrial residential nice to each other. And a school.
Well, and there's, there's more than one place, right, so you got Brickman, and you got your place, I mean. Well, the industrial was there before the residential was.
Yeah, but they should have.
They might not have the NP zone, you know, so, you know, it's not Bill's fault. Not my fault, there's nothing you can do about creating, you know, there's only so much you can do, right, so, there's only so much land between here and there. And, you know, it is what it is, the industrial was there before then, so, you know, yeah, should they put a buffer between your residential and that industrial? Yes, but whoever was in charge at that point in time either didn't have the right for vision to be on the set, you know, wait a second. You know, we need to think about this before we move forward.
And in the worst case, you just look to a major boulevard or street to kinda be.
The vibe.
Some delineation that, you know.
So, so I'm wondering, maybe there would've been a precedent for this, but given the way. Things seem to change in faster pace that everything is operating at, should we consider proposing. The ability sometime between now and the next ten, twelve years, for the next cycle of this, that if. We deemed it valuable to make a change, or to propose an alternative, or a modification, that we could do so.
Are you talking about buffering and those things, Bill? I'm not sure, so again, it gets back to that, it's very challenging, right, so you have. You have industrial property, prime example, seven, seven, Seven Ridge side, I don't know, what is it?
Rising Ridge.
Yeah, it's not Rising Ridge, it's Park Ridge. Off of Park Ridge, you know. You know, you're doing a taking, if you're taking from the industrial lot to create a buffer between that and the residential, right, so they have their zoning. Their zoning is, the base zoning is industrial, you know, to, to tell, to tell that person that, I'm sorry, a hundred feet of your property has to become. Natural space, or conservation, or whatever, between the, your property and this residential's industrial property. When your property was already there before the residential's. It's very difficult, and we're gonna get ourselves into a corner, essentially, where, you know, again, there's only so, they're making more late, it's not like we can just. Take a parcel, no, let's put it right there.
I, I wonder, because we require residential developments and for mixed-use developments, so why don't we require any for industrial or anything like that? Any open space requirements?
Because it doesn't bring any people into the mess, there's no, there's no people, the open spaces is supported to people.
Yeah.
Right, but, well, prime example, so eighteen A on Rising Ridge Road was that industrial, three-building subdivision, or parts of it, you know. One of the requirements was, you know, they have a fifty-foot buffer between, again, now in our code, it is a buffer, so. There's a fifty-foot buffer between any structure and any residential property, and then they have their setbacks on top of that, and there's a class A string between the two. And so, you know, I have the tools currently that I can say, this is required, you know, do it, or you don't get approved, so, you know. They made strides to make it better for their situations, but, you know, there's some situations that are already occurring.
I think we just need to do that from the core.
Well, it's just like the property that, it's the property to the left on the other side of Park Ridge, seven A, and right across the street, there's still an industrial lot there. Four and a half acres.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Full of trees, that somebody was offering a buyer.
They were, but like, how much is a four-and-a-half acre piece of industrial property with real access cost? How much does a piece of property that cost? I'm gonna say two point five million dollars.
I, I can see a lot of fields there, a lot of ball fields. The town.
So I have a question, so moving forward, like we're talking, there's another map we're, I hope this isn't right.
Okay, you.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the map, but it's a question about buffers, like if the future annexation. If we, like, for example, L, what is this property behind all of those houses on South Main? If we did absorb that, but it, because it's not filmed, it's, it's a farm, right?
Yeah, the future land use for that is UPE.
Office Park.
Office Park, what is it?
Okay, so. Is there a buffer required in that one? Because, because I'm just wondering, we sort of, like Steve was talking about, we sort of, look at these possible absorption areas now, and then say, okay. What would, the first question would be, what would be the buffer so that around everything is not as impacted as it might be?
Well, we had to look at, I don't think there's a buffer required that I'm familiar with, with, yeah, I've never seen this.
That's what I'm wondering, like, we're just talking about this right now, and the citizens there, you know, and they can have a fence right on the back end of their property, and it could be all parking for an office park, but. If we wanted to plan, we could make it like, oh no, you have to do a hole or something, so they don't see your parking lot, kind of thing, so that. You know, industrial, or even though it's Office Park, to make it more. Just saying, we're having no buffers, I'm like, these road, these road homes, at some point, might be based with something, we don't want them to, you know.
Well, as, as, prime example, let's look at this map, you know. This cave remain, you know, is one of my questions, are we, are we gonna leave the craft property as a future annexation? Not the, not the craft property, but the regular property. You know, is that, does cave remain on this map? You know, we, we killed it for an annexation, you know, and, and currently it's under review in the county for, for a lot of subdivision. You know, three lot that remain.
Did they pull, did they say they pulled it from here?
Pulled it, and the town council did approve.
Okay, yeah, so.
Didn't get pulled.
Sorry.
In that town.
Well, I mean, area B is the same, same topic, isn't it?
No.
No?
Oh, is you.
Is it, so you're saying.
We're still in discussion with the county.
So it's still active?
Okay, I would not remove it.
Not removing it? Oh, that's kinda a good answer from my standpoint, I just didn't know.
We're not getting rid of G H.
Where do these properties, where do they get put in here? Were these just sent to request by anyone? Like, how would we add these?
I'm not sure to that answer, I would say, looking at the map, it sort of. Eases the edges of the corporate limits, you know, this is, this is, as the town grows. These parcels, when you look at them, potentially, now, there might've been possible ones that were applicants, that said, you know. If, if this gets annexed in the future, I want my property in there, which I'm sure G H and I are all those, those items.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm curious about, because we've, like, have, has it come before us before, has previous council, you know, or planning commission members, like, or they've identified these areas, or, I just wonder how they happen at this point? I mean, I don't, I don't buy the annexation, because, you know, if it gives more buffer, that's what the town wants to do, but I just wondered, because we're taking the layer adding. Like, where do we get that information from? How, how do they get on there? I mean, I can draw a bigger square than this, you could add more.
Sure.
I'm just curious.
Like I was saying, G H and I, I'm sure, were by the applicant, who wants to develop that property in the future. L, it's just, you know, I'm not sure why, K, I'm not sure, I mean, J, I'm not even sure, we're there, they're the only one who talked to the town. With annexation.
J does not?
No.
So we should just take it along?
I would say no.
No?
No, because. Who says what happens in ten years? If it's in a designated grid boundary, then, you know. I don't see where that would be beneficial removing it. If K gets developed, right, so this is undeveloped plan too, if you, there's a little map in here, undeveloped plan, so, so if K gets developed, subdivided within the county. It's never gonna come into the town, we should remove it from our annexation, future annexation. You know, if it's, if it's subdivided and built on, and there's no ground left to be annexed into the town, it should get removed from our annexation. Again, E, I don't think we've met the, met the winner yet, but E is of course the full property that went through annexation, buffer road property for full. These are the annexations, right, and the council approved it, and I think we're still in the window of refraining or something.
So that'll probably come off.
Well, that would become within our corporate limits.
Wait till you think that the council approved the annexation.
They have approved it, and it's now in waiting to see if there's any. Opposition, excuse me.
That's just for E, not for D.
And F, of course, is Dorsey Town, so, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna wanna leave that on there, because, again, that's potentially on, on today, especially if B comes in. So, again, you have to look at it with open arms and open eyes, because you can't be very narrow-minded, you have to think about everything. And again, we're not looking at a mile away from the edge of that property. But maybe we should, maybe we should be, I mean, as new market grows, I mean, they're, they're coming this way, I mean. So, where do you, where do you wanna, where do you wanna put your buffer? If anything, there's B, I'd be looking to try to buffer to the west as much as possible.
Well, yeah, I, we've kinda been talking about that a little before, because, you know, we've, we've had this requirement for open space, we've asked for open space. And then there's a lot of new market that are going back and forth recently, we don't want the town annexing it, but then you're losing your own space that you can acquire. And so, and we've talked about having mortgages, moving over, and they're just approving everything, and, I mean, there is a huge chunk of properties on the west side there.
That's part of, I don't think everyone's aware of just exactly how much new market is doing.
Yeah.
So they won't see it until it kind of comes right to their doorstep, and then they're like, uh-oh, by then it's too late.
It's very limited, we should have.
I think, I think we should probably be doing a better job with that, because it, it, it's coming, and just because we're annexing doesn't mean we're building gigantic developments. And I think we're confused about that.
Well, again, these are future annexations, so they're not being annexed into the town currently, but they are on the books for future annexation, which. Allows them to move forward and steady their pace than if it wasn't, you know, you don't have to say that they can't do a map amendment to take a parcel that, you know. Say if you go to G and that parcel off to, up against Watersville Road, maybe they wanna annex it in the town in some way. Not to say they couldn't, they would just have to go through the process to get a map amendment, to be, to be annexed.
It's in reality, I mean, I don't know if it would be a bad idea if the town actually took this piece out, gave it to a committee. And then worked on, hey, let's look at this and what we can look at, let's look at who owns these properties, and let's talk about, is this something we will get in these ten years? Get the feelings on which property owns, and draw a map around it.
Yeah, because.
Well, that's one of the recommendations, essentially.
Yeah.
In here already.
Yeah, or just not doing it.
Now, a little history on Dorsey Town, didn't a while ago that one come up as, because I remember sitting in a meeting, and the citizens of Dorsey Town spoke, and it was kinda like four to five, and no, we don't wanna be a part of the town. Because there was a water question, like you're gonna have to invest in putting your water into the town.
You gotta pay a connection fee of twenty-five thousand dollars per property.
Yeah, not everybody can do that.
But that might change in ten years.
Yeah.
That would stay as a future annexation, it's silly not to, I mean, and even where, even where W is, in my opinion. We have a piece of, look at W, the well, we're above C, and look at W, we have a piece of property that's in the corporate limits on the east side of twenty-seven. But then on the west side of twenty-seven, right across it, we have a parcel where that plain major street is, that's not in the corporate limits. Like, why, why isn't that there? You know, I, that, that to me seems not fluid, and that should be a potential annexation number right there, personally.
So, how do we start the annexation process then, with this, because it isn't even highlighted, like, we just said.
We just need to make, on this future annexation, we should label it as such, as a future annexation, in my opinion.
Because it looks like there's two white pieces that, yeah, strips that we should put on there.
It should be, that should be part of the future annexation.
Also have that, yeah, by M.
Oh, this, that chunk right there.
Uh, so that one is the trailer park, and they won't be annexed in that, because there are not a lot of trailer parks in the local options. But then again, if you look at, look at that again, there's a funny looking little triangle over there.
Yeah.
You know, again, so you have the, the ultimate town boundaries, that's within our ultimate town boundaries, the dark blue line.
Go through the waters here, also.
You know, so, you know, should those triangle properties, and they're probably at the same point, and it might be the twenty-five thousand dollars, be connected to the public, to the home sewer. Now again, it might get to a point where, you know, their wells start failing, because they have. Close proximity to another septic system, or whatever it is, and then, at some point, you know, and E might step in and say, they need to connect the water and sewer, and that'll have to be annexed. And then there's some actual that's out. It's a very delicate dance to make sure that you're not being overreaching, but then also being comprehensive in what you're looking.
So to be clear, you wanna recommend dropping K, and then putting in the little guy, the, the, I don't know, there's a last name, L, make N O or something, with the strips there next to the road.
You're talking about where that plain major street should.
Yeah, sorry, it's, these guys right here, the white, just make them like, or, I guess.
It might become K.
Yeah, they could become K.
Just out of curiosity, since we're talking about fitting there, just above K, we have this part here, why don't we consider these open, or form areas here to connect up here? Why don't we consider these open, or farm areas here to connect up here? And that would give you a bigger buffer, or at least long down the road.
Well, I know that the one parcel, I'm sure you're up here, so, up here, um, I can, I can bring this future land use map up here for future annexation. This parcel was, um, the parcel that was talked to be the future annexation previously. And that was the, what was the, trying to get the name, uh, it wasn't correct, it was, um, Zelman? Was it the Zelman annexation?
You said Zelman, huh?
Yeah, that's Zelman right there. This parcel up here is the Zelman property.
Okay.
Um, that was under the future annexation in the past.
Yeah.
Um, and there was a lot of controversy, this is prior to being.
That was early two thousands.
Right, so, um, you know, that was taken off. If you went back to the two thousand three master plan, I'm sure that, that showed as a future annexation.
No.
Why? Well, do you know the controversy? Did the family just say, no, thank you?
Uh, that's the first, no.
I mean, the only memory I have is that the, uh, the, the developer of, was, uh, offended a number of town leaders in that, um, the, the division of the land in the area was such that the only portion reserved for for the town's use was basically, um,
What?
Just boggy area, it was wetland.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, also, if I'm not, I'm not mistaken, I think, uh, they submitted a plan similar to what, sort of what Beck is showing, very dense developments. Um, and it brought out that they support, they support some tortures, similar to where we're at today, in the background there. That's my, that's what I've heard in my mind.
Maybe it works differently now, it's maybe a future open space, so.
For town purchase?
For town purchase.
Again, I know you're talking about town purchase, right, but, you know.
We gotta keep it on the same.
Talk to a council member and we can tell you right now that, as, as this, as the, uh, council president said, or the mayor said, you know, we used to have a huge reserve. We don't anymore. Um, you know, we don't, we aren't as fluid as we used to be because we hit no raise taxes. You know, so there's, there's two ways to get to the end of the revenue. You either, you either raise taxes or you're allowed to develop it to help pay, offset those costs. You know, I mean, I mean, the back property, when you look at all the fees and all the impact fees and all that, it's, it's substantial amount of money that will be brought to this town. But, you know, you gotta, you gotta have the powers of the owner, allow that to happen. It's not my fault.
Steve, was it the Spanish touch?
So, anyway, um, so I don't know if you want to do it to a different map or what you want to do, or if you want to start looking at the chapter. Again, I'm not sure, this was one of the ones I wanted to sort of get your feel on, on K was a big one. And then these other parcels that are, should they be annexed in the town? Probably, are they developable? The problem is that they don't have good road frontage. Not to say they couldn't be expanded, uh, maybe that townhouse community might expand uh, into that area if it was annexed in the town, uh, at the same zone, and that's similar to what's permanent there, which is probably part seven. And they could do a continuation of that, um, continuation of those townhouses.
Well, I'm.
But do we want, do we want that? You know, that's the other question. Is that what people want? It's really tough to see on this small map.
Yeah. But, um, when, when we were, we were talking about, um, about regular, um, before we took a vote on it, I was strongly, you go out there and you walk it and you see it, you see, it's, it's, it's right on the prospect. And so, and you, you understand the traffic volume and the speed that, that, that that causes. And then it is really slow. Uh, I didn't like that from a development standpoint. And then to pack in, you know, additional homes right on top of a slope that's going to water the runoff and so forth is gonna come right down on the line, uh, to establish something below it. I've never been in traffic. Certainly. So, I don't see that changing.
Right. And again, I understand is they're still working through the county currently with the, the three lot domain.
On the parcel A, which is, which is Beck.
The parcel A is actually not Beck, that is the hill farm. If you look at, uh, the legend to your life is the hill.
The hill farm, yeah. I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, and that planned major street that's shown there will, again, align on Century Drive, I think. And Mr. Nill does not want to, uh, again, it's there for future annexation, but, you know, will it? Well, and so I even looked across the street, where's, there's two parcels over there. Should we not have those as part of future annexation? Because personally, I think those could be a great regional park as well, possibly. There's some kind of, is there a level field, farm field? It could be something, you know.
So, to consider that, do we just send that letter to the people and just say, hey, would we consider it? Or can we just put it on our map for future?
We can just put it on our map.
We just put it on our map? Because that, that would be good to have it.
I think if we were spreading somewhere, that would be the way to go.
I agree.
Part, part, you know, I mean, especially when you have the nine acre area there, um, you know, you have a fairly large park, the, the, when you reach the park over there currently, uh, and then you have the, the hogwood, there are icons. I think that would be a great, um, potential multi-ball field parcel. It's level. The grading is minimal, right? You have direct access to Watersville Road. To me, it seems like that's a a great potentiality for property to be developed into a park within the town. Should that be included? Possibly.
Possibly. Just like the one on the north side that we talked about. It's a possibility.
What's, what's the one, the big chunk next to Zelman? Do you guys know that? The one right here?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a,
Yeah.
That's a farm I know, and I, I feel like that's under preservation, and I almost feel like we need to have a map of that too as well. It's not in here, but I can find, but, you know, around the town, what, what parcels are preserved, if they're in an ag credit, they're never gonna get developed. They're never gonna, you know, they're never gonna expand, they're gonna be a farm. Um, so I, I think it'd be curi-, that was one of my curiosities is like, where does that fall? You know, what, what, again, do you look to the left or to the east, or to the west and, and to the south? I mean, there's not much land to be developed, certainly, you know, um, I don't, I think that property to the, along the prospect there heading north is, um, not prospect.
John, could we get from the county, um, the zoning or the area immediately around?
Oh, yeah, I can, mostly that's all added up there, but I can, I can reach out to Freddie County, Carroll County, and yet, I, I'm gonna ask for a zoning map of both Carroll and Freddie there, and also, uh, what, what parcels are potentially, um, in ag credits? Because again, it might be a new point for that larger parcel there that it gets in ag.
Actually, it would be handy to have that on the map for the citizens to see. Um, and if it's not, do you think it would be too controversial to add Zelman to a future add penance, or do you think that that's worth? I, I mean, if it's not, it's not, but.
We just, we put it on the map, it doesn't mean it'll get.
Right, right.
Or it's gonna be developed.
Or, exactly, but I think when they see the boundaries, sometimes people, it, it's not clear because it looks like we're gobbling up, but at the same time, we have a town next to us that's covering up and spreading annexing, and if we don't sort of buffer ourselves from it now, or take steps to sort of consider that for the future, it's gonna be a problem.
As a planning commission, yes, you can, if you want to put Zelman as a future annexation, you can do that. And then you'll have to get it through and set the future land use for that parcel as well.
Yeah.
But, but I think it's important, and I think we all feel this way, is however this map gets edited in the version that gets in front of the council, I think it's expected that for each of the parcels, whatever the color code, there's a, a short concise basis of rationale, I still want to feel, it's a candidate annexation. And whatever that may be, um, and you would help us guide there, whether it's, you know, residential growth, whether it's recharge area for wells, you know, there's a variety of things where I think you can sit here and justify, you know, we need that parcel to be within the town limits. But, again, I think for each one, we need to, we need to craft that.
Right. Should be looking, each one to make sure that, well, here's a prime example, there's the future annexation areas. And we have conservation, maintenance, and the industrial office park and plant. You know, if you look at it, G, H, and I are conservation, you know, which is, you know, to conserve open space. Typically, it's a three acre lots. Um, and again, so same thing with, uh, the mill cr-, the mill farm and the craft farm, they're all conservation, which is to eliminate dense development. Now, not to say that they can't cluster, um, the subdivision to preserve as much open space as possible.
Right.
You know, which is more desirable for many reasons.
Yeah.
You know, so, but all the green areas would have to be, um, could be clustered, but they would have to be conserved as well.
And, and not to overachieve on that rationale thing, but if we can also speak to the pros and cons of that argument for annexation. For instance, the Dorsey Town residents, like, we've already talked about a con for that with regard to their, you know, individual expense. There could be a con relative, you mentioned it earlier, and that is lacking road frontage, right, or, you know, access frontage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, pros, I think there's some obvious things, you know, but again, on the con side, there could be uh, geographic constraints for development, more than fifteen degrees slope, et cetera, et cetera. But I think that would be handy also for the council to kind of digest, you know, why is that on the map? And what's, what's good about it being on the map, or what are the challenges, kind of?
Right.
Kind of summary for each one. But again, I, I know that would be perhaps additional work, but it'd be valuable.
And then, so it's pretty enough there, Mill, is that Mill today?
Yeah, yeah.
So he's, he's come.
Controversial.
He's already, so that can never be.
Well, it's not zoned anywhere. This is the future annexation areas. These are the designated land uses for those future areas. Currently, that's zoned agricultural probably within the county, is my guess.
Right, because that's what I'm wondering, is it protected? Was it, like, did he choose to do something so that preservation, like up here, where, um, next to Zelman, do you have any question? Is that, is that preserved?
I, I, I think that parcel's preserved.
It is, okay.
I don't know if it is, I'm guessing.
Oh?
He's, he doesn't know that much.
Right.
Guessing.
Here, this, I don't have a zoning map in front of you for Carroll County or Freddie County. But I would think that this is, this is definitely ag, that's ag, this is ag, this is ag in the county. This is R forty thousand and, and conservation, I think, if I'm not Well, if you look at the vacant land inventory, which is your first one, I mean, there's some of these, of course, um,
Yes, you can entry up there.
Well, well, yeah, so, again, they're currently vacant, but if you look at the Brittany Matter, which is the R two, which is the lower rate east side, that'll all come off of this map. Most of back acre circle is developed, so there's no vacant way back there. Uh, so this map will change in that respect. If you look to the west or the rising ridge, um, the rectangular parcel there is eighteen A, which will be developed. Because we have the approved plan for that. And then if you look, I mean, if you look at this one part, this, this, the bright yellow parcel there, I can bring it up on the map if you want. Yeah, so if you look at this, um, this parcel right here, it's like, it's like a seventeen acre parcel within the corporate limits that, um, potentially is zoned of our five, I think it is. Which is, you know, pretty dense development back in this, and this is basically almost at the head of our current rails and trails. It comes in here, the west side, no, the west side goes to here. So our rails trail west ends here currently, or will be ending here. So, I mean, it seems like it's dying for like, almost like a central park within the town. Right, but, but again, that's partly, you know, our five, they can easily come in and put in multiple townhouses there. You know, as long as they have road frontage, which you know, I think this is sunshine, sun, sunset.
Oh, I got that.
Oh.
Anyway, uh, so you have to look at all these, all these parcels that potentially could be, you know,
Yeah.
developed in the future. Uh, but again, so, uh, of course, you have the back property there, which is the purple, orange, red, and yellow, which is of course the four different zones, uh, that, that the back property was, which led to believe to be M X D, which is currently what it is. So, you know, the, the actual, the actual zone there is M X D, not, not, uh, industrial, residential, commercial, and March seventh industrial, uh, residential.
Would you take the green tree on up in the top?
Uh, probably, so, um, so currently it's still vacant land because we don't have approved plan. So, it's a, it's a fine line between
Yeah, right.
when and when you say it's not, it's not vacant land anymore, because currently you don't have a plan for it. We have a plan to review, but it's only pre-concept sketch plan, no concept plan, no final, preliminary final plan. So, and that, I feel as though they're still moving forward, they're, they've been doing test tests up there because they had to redesign some of the storm and manage the facilities because they couldn't get in for friction. So, you know, the design might change slightly, um, but I think, um, it's very close to what was being presented previously.
That, it's a community commercial right at the top.
Yeah, so that, that of course is Green Tree. So we have the one on the east side of Main Street, which is community commercial. And then the green tree is of course, community commercial with the M X U C C Riverway, which also, you know, encompasses the portion that's not, not colored in red, which is right here, which is the six acre parcel. If you look at the map up here.
Oh, you're right, underneath the.
That, that's part of the, uh, that's part of the Green Tree parcel as well, it's just that it's not.
It's not gonna be built.
Little parcel there.
It's gonna be in the building.
It's gonna be open space. It's all open space. It's almost six acres of part of, part of the Green Tree. That's all part of this great triangle here, there's this parcel here as well. Part of that.
Okay.
Excuse me. So again, just looking at these maps, I, I, I think, you know, and I wouldn't bring them in front of you just so that we can, I could get back to Carroll County and let them do modifications based upon some input and direction from you guys. So again, I'm gonna be removing, um, the Brittany Matter. I might leave lot seventy, um, two there that's currently, um, land inventory that hasn't been built on, which is, uh, up for resident, or up for industrial. So if you look, uh, uh, we'll see. So lot seventy, I think it was seventy-three, excuse me, is basically very long here. It's like a two and a half acre parcel. So there's a, there's open space between here and the Brittany Matter subdivision, which is here. Um, there's a, there was one parcel that was left there, parcel seventy-three, which is right down in this area here, uh, which they came up requesting industrial, and I think you guys gave a favorable recommendation for industrial at one of our workshops.
John, it seems to me that this discussion now is revolving around, on page eighty, with strong similarity to, to municipal, to municipal group. Legislation passed in two thousand and six under House. Legislation passed in two thousand and six under House Bill eleven forty-one entitled, L and use local government planning requires all municipal comprehensive plans now included in M G E. This planning L required an examination of past growth trends and patterns and includes a projection of future growth in the population and resulting land needs based on capacity analysis and effects of growth and infrastructure, natural future growth in and adjacent, present municipality and future growth areas. That's very similar to what we're talking about in this meeting. So it's a large scale, you saw of everything we see in this ten, twelve year old plan, what we've actually seen develop up to this point and where it goes from here.
What I wonder from the future annexation areas, that off of the town boundary, if that is the M G E, you know?
Could be.
But, but I think that's worth doing some diving into House Bill eleven forty-one just to sort of see what's the framework for that and what, what's required.
But we're talking and thinking in that direction.
Yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir.
I think it's also useful for us to look at the back section of, of the, of chapter four, and that was the goals and implementation strategy section. Those goals and rationale for each other.
Uh, P G.
P G, P G through, through eighty-two. I think at a minimum, how do we feel about these goals, they were created, you know, ten, twelve years ago, but how do we feel about them and this material? And our, our thoughts on the best approach to the future annexation areas and all that we've been talking about.
Well, we could add, like, let's see, we started with goal two, we could add something in there, how upper between, you know, between, like, to make it more harmonious with whatever is next to it, kind of thing. But then again, that would get to where certain codes, everything as well, could be heard or, we have to, we have to.
Yeah, I, I read that goal, and there's almost an implied message in that particular goal that says, commercial and industrial development has a higher priority than residential, we should kind of read it. It's, it says.
Well, that's someone at home.
Back then?
Of, of this guy.
More commercial.
That's, that, that is an overall theme coming out of the writing back in twenty thirteen, that commercial and industrial has a higher priority than residential.
Well, because commercial and industrial has a higher tax basis.
Understood.
Provides more revenue and less drawn, what are the requirements?
And as we're seeing, people don't want, some people don't want a lot of residence, more residential community than, than we are, because the tax issue, we don't have as much money. So, like rock hard place, more hard place over here, like, how do we balance?
Well, and, and so, so to kind of look at it from more recent contemporary decisions with mixed use, is mixed use trying to create the residential back end to that, to that calculus?
I think it's trying to create a balance between, right, so, I mean, that's why we had researchers, we said that the only, you know, you know, seventy-five percent residential, twenty-five percent work, place first, because you can have one or the other, right, so it's to create that balance. Again, with the development that's being proposed currently, um, yes, it, it, it's very close to seventy-five, twenty-five, um, but again, we are a bedroom community, right, so, um, you know, again, there, there's not a huge amount of inventory within the town for purchase that I know of. I don't see very many for sale signs around the town by now. So, you know, I, I think there's a demand for residential. The question is, is, you know, to what extent do we want to allow residential to purchase? And again, and, and what rates? Do you want to allow a ten percent growth over the next ten percent, ten years, or do you want to allow, you know, a twenty-five percent growth over the next ten years? You know, what, what is, what is the?
The mix?
The ratio that we're willing to accept?
Did he say that from here, no, ten years ago?
Oh, I see. Well, and, and I also look at, I'm looking at goal one right off the bat, so you know, prioritizing, I think the term, this, this.
Infill rather than addition.
Right, it's rather infill than replacement addition. And so when I look at that, and look at the plan, we don't have a lot of.
Infill.
Infill, so you have to either develop, either add expand more land.
Right.
To develop, or you develop parcels that are within the corporate limits, to whatever the zone based zone is. For example, I, you know, if people don't want it, but it's an infill property, which is any goal number one, and, and, and we are going through annexation, it's an infill property, that's our main goal, that's goal number one, but, you know, we're. And, and I, I, I think we need it, to what extent and how dense we want it, et cetera, you know, is really not my call, right? I mean, I think if we're trying to set goals and hit the goals, then when we're hitting a goal, we need to take the point or we don't take the point, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, and everything too is, you have to look at what's happening around the town, because ten years ago, the market was not exploding the way that it is, so, I mean, I think that should be stated in here somewhere.
This is our comprehensive, and I've been.
No, I know, but it's coming, there, there's development happening around us and.
That will be here for forty years or more. Right, I mean, that really technically is, it's not like there's just open land between here and there.
Right.
There, there's other, you know, I mean, I'd have to look at the map, you know, completely from here to there, I mean, you talk, it's six miles or more, I mean, how far is the murder?
But it's the fastest growing area in Frederick County.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's in that quadrant that's adjacent to us.
Sure.
And they've been pushing for three years.
Sure.
And sometimes one of the traps of the government is, you know, oh, we got time for that, or the next group are gonna fix that, or ten years, twenty years from now, oh, that council is gonna do it, or this one, instead of actually planning and saying, no, we know it's coming, we know this is coming twenty years from now, we need to start pushing whatever boundaries we're developing or resources that we need, that we foresee in the future, or that, you know, maybe our children who are living here are gonna need, and it's easier to do now to start the process than it is to wait until the last point to let them fix it, in short, it's not proper planning.
When we were beginning in Frederick for the annual planning commission, they were like, I think fifty years in the future, so if that's coming in the next forty years, we should say something like, hey, we need to plan to sort of protect our, not protect our, but, you know, think about our borders a little bit.
Fill it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so I'm agreeing with everything you're saying, and I'm trying to see how we can tighten that up and kind of a thrust in this paragraph, and so I think something like, you know, for the remaining infill, infill opportunities, we, we look to prioritize residential development in those remaining vacant lots. For expanding the town borders and future annexations, we look to using those areas for improved quality of life, I'm speaking through recreation, parks, arts, entertainment venues, et cetera.
Where that, where that city out, that, you know, waterfront.
Yeah.
Right, right, and, and further opportunities for expanded residential developments, that, that sort of language, and then of course, maybe words that say recognizing we need to seek more water sources.
Yeah.
So the, the annexation, and maybe you could put that under quality of life issues, but that's kind of like a, an imperative that we talk about expanding in order to bring in more wellheads, that sort of thing. So I think, you know, something that kind of paints that picture of both current infill opportunities and annexation opportunities, that's something you would look for, right?
Well, again, I, I, you have to be careful, because again, you don't wanna make your envelope so big that you can't support the water for those annexations, and you have to sort of, there's, there's checks and balances, right, so, you know, where are we getting the water, how are we processing the water? You know, we might wanna have this annexed into the town, or even if it isn't annexed, maybe it's something by property adjoining to the west, and maybe it's not annexed into the town, not that it can't be utilized by town citizens, even though it's our property, it doesn't have to be annexed. Does it help with their recharge rates? Possibly, you know, when the man that Barney did, you know, we're okay with recharge, but, and, and where we need to recharge, there's no land available, you know, so it's, 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 it's tough, because, you know, you have to think about it completely, as, you know, you can easily buy land to the, to the west, just comes down to money, right? You should all have.
And, I mean, I'll get off my soapbox, I touched on wellhead expansion or opportunities, but we also got to start thinking about how do we, how do we gain more wastewater treatment facility capacity, and is that going to be something still along the south of the town?
Go. My understanding is.
I don't know.
We're at capacity of two different water areas, I mean, and you can't expand it without going over limit.
Right, right.
So you've got that.
And the Carol County study on our current facility said it is geographically limited to any expansion, so in other words, what it says is where, where it's cited, S I T E E, you can't, you can't add on in order to increase capacity.
Can increase capacity by different forms of treatment.
Technology.
Technology, which supposedly is getting better. And I would defer to engineering there, because I don't, I don't deal with that shit.
Literally.
So.
But, but again, when we start looking at future annexation, back and moving back to that topic, you know, there should be some future annexation parcel that, that is tagged to potential expansion of wastewater treatment, so.
Well, I thought, I thought the town council had tasked engineering to look at that with the potentiality of discharge on this side of the ridge, but in the Frederick County side, but I don't know if there was any data that came back on the end, but I'd have to talk to Marty on that, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, so I mean, the problem is, 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 it's like, as you said, you know, it's finding the right site to lie into, have the lowest point, the discharge area that N D allows the discharge into, right, so that's really, it comes back to N D, water allocation and, and what they'll allow us to discharge into the Tepco or whatever. So again, I mean.
But I think overall, it's fair to say, all this discussion is like, the words written in twenty thirteen aren't applicable now. You know, putting residential development as a lower to commercial, industrial, I think, I think we're more inclined to get a, a more of a balancing.
Yeah, well, that's one growth, too, it's not just like, we're not prioritizing just this one thing, it's what makes sense for this area at this time, it's not forcing something in there.
I mean, just saying, emphasize more balancing, commercial, industrial, residential, but I don't know if we have, that's my own question, I just.
Yeah, the whole.
We were trying.
Yeah, the whole lead up in this paragraph talks about explosive growth in the past two decades, again, twenty thirteen writing, you know, so that.
There was.
There was.
And, and, and I agree with that, but from twenty thirteen on to now, it's, it's been a slower trend.
Right, the only development we've really had in the town is Brittany Matter, right, I think that's the, that's the newest development that's occurred within this ten year period, right? Fine roof, five blocks, that's nothing, you know, I mean, the three houses on Park Avenue, that's, that's minimal, very minimal growth, and that's all in, right, I mean, you know, again, I know people complain about it, but it's, it's one of record plan that was, you know, approved, and it needs some setback requirements, so I can't, as the, as the zoning manager, deny that type of construction.
Oh, the, the new one, such as.
Yeah, there's just a lot of record that, building with all the setbacks and.
I like what Steve says, I mean, smart growth says you don't put any potential zoning into a low priority, you, you consider them all, but in the right balance.
They're all even.
Given the trends, given everything.
Sorry, the, speaking of things, what, the.
Things, Park Avenue.
Yeah, like these, these things that, the buildings next to Bank of America, things that are being built, that's what I meant to say.
Fifteen.
It's still current scaffolding.
There's some, there was some levels there.
There's, there's personality involved in that.
They use the technical contractors.
Yes, yes, first.
Getting projects started in the days.
They, so they're sort of stopped now?
No, I think, I can find out about that, trying to keep your report back, I think there was pushing, pushing pressure over there, and so, not sure exactly, if I was the, if I was the owner of the property, I'd want to finish it so I could get leased, rented, because there's two floors of residential there.
Yeah.
Studio apartments.
Yeah.
And a commercial block.
And a commercial, a commercial.
I know those things would go like that, because I, I constantly see.
I'm sure, and I'm not even sure if they're, if they're long term rentals or more of a short term, I don't think they're shooting for, not to say a hotel, but I think it was more of a year leases, maybe six month leases, transitional housing for somebody who's sold their house and they're trying to get into a new house, but their new house isn't ready or whatever.
Right.
Not sure what, what the draw was, or for somebody who's, you know, he's a one bedroom or something, you know?
And like, right, it's sort of as a flex, that's just sort of what I've been saying here for years, right, if they start doing anything with it, or.
Many people have approached them and purchased it.
Because, I mean, that's a great potential something right there, speaking.
I'm sure some developer wants to get a little bit, turn it into some force.
It's private property, we know this is, but I'm just wondering if any, any, there's any.
Is there a community commercial?
Oh.
When, when we talk about balancing the residential portion, just continue, is there any current throttle or restriction on the number of residential permits that are, I mean, it speaks in this chapter, again, talks about in two thousand and six, the town passed an ordinance in Annual Eleven on issued residential permits.
Right.
And it was further reduced from forty per year down to only twenty-four years. So are we under any existing throttle?
Yeah, we're still under that same throttle. It can be waived by the town council.
Okay.
Ultimately, if, say, if, if, so Brittany Matter, for prime example, they were exceeding that twenty-four units within a calendar year, so they requested that they, they requested an extension to allow for additional building permits, and, you know, I guess, you know, at that point in time, it was approved.
Will, will Green Tree be applicable to this?
Uh, possibly unless it's part of the D A R A where they, you know, you know, they might be able to do a D A R A, I'm not sure, and go have a plan.
Asking for an exemption?
Well, asking for that, a waiver, that was possible, you know? Could that happen, I mean, and so, you get into town houses, it gets kind of a little, a little gray, because, you know, you know, is, is, is the six units, that's six, six separate ability grounds, right, but you're, they're connected, you know, so.
And I just bring it up only because it could be contradictory unless we address that current throttle, and when you start talking about balancing residential with residential growth opportunities, and yet, we say that in full light of the fact that we have other imposed restriction, you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
It's like, grow the residential part, grow them in these potentially annexed areas, but do it at only twenty-four per year, kind of sounds, you know, but.
It's a bit of a governor, you know, so, and I'm not sure, you know, is that to just have slow growth, you know, but, but. That's a decision, I guess, the town council has to, they, they want a waiver or, or.
There's usually a couple of little waiver.
Once again?
Like, it seems like the waivers are kind of treated as special treatment or, I don't know.
We are, you're being, to, around that, so it is kind of special, special treatment.
I mean, and it's not that at all, it may just be assessing some cases. I mean, and it's not that at all, it may just be assessing, it's not necessarily.
Well, again, prime example, so we have, what is it, so we have, is it down to sixty five, I think, units up there, I think, is what they're proposing, Green Tree.
Yeah.
Sixty five, sixty.
Sixty, sixty three, maybe sixty, sixty three. So again, so, okay, do you want a project to be completed within eighteen months or two years, or do you wanna drag it out for four years, you know?
With that restriction.
So, really, you know, if, if, it's all much, the town, you know, if they wanna, if they wanna limit that development, or do they just wanna allow it to develop? Get the families in there and get it functioning, or you wanna have this slow, slow, methodless.
We can do it in the right house, it's in town code, so.
Right. They can still, they can still request a waiver to allow for that, so what it does is allows us, the government, so we can either choose to say, no, continue on, you know, continue on selling your units or whatever. Or, no, we're on what you have, within a calendar year.
So John, question for you, are we going to draft in, in this document? A section that corresponds to the major goals and application strategies that are in.
Yes, I'm gonna try to rewrite these and then have you guys give me the, also, if, if you wanna. Again, since it does use gold too, right, you know, are we, are we emphasizing more of a balance between residential, commercial, industrial, or do you wanna say commercial, industrial, and residential, you know? Which one comes first, is that, what's the priority, that's what we're out of sort of.
We just emphasize smart growth?
Right.
Instead of naming themselves.
And not, and not, not, not singling out either one of those three.
Yeah.
Smart growth, smart growth, and again, so.
But I think, and again, just throwing out an idea, but I think there needs to be some kind of guide toward smart growth.
What is the definition of smart growth?
Your definition might be different than Steve's.
And so to, another way to rephrase kind of this question I'm talking myself through is to what end do we wanna have smart growth, and then what are the parts of that? So to what end, do we wanna have the next ten years emphasize growth that emphasizes quality of life, like I mentioned before, you know?
Financial stability of the town.
Or, or growth that enables better financial footing, I don't know if that.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, we're gonna pick on that.
They can tax the waste though, they can pay us a ton of money, have the finance to make us great, but it doesn't necessarily smart.
Or do we say growth that ensures has a high priority, expanded water resources and water tr- you, you know, kinda. So I think we could possibly come up with words that kinda say, okay, but what's the shining light that I go toward in order to achieve smart growth? Whether it's residential, whether it's commercial, you know, those are kinda, this is kinda my contact, those are kind of neighbors of what you're trying to achieve, you know? It's, it's housing, it's commercial, it's office park, it's neighborhood professional, but what are we trying to get to with good land use for around fifteen years? And again, taking off kind of the quality of life is.
It's that tricky grace, small town charm.
Is it small town charm, which is subjective, right?
Smart, you have smarter, being planning, concern for the apartment, and work, you know, quality of life, that's basically what it's about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I may try to take a whack at a couple of sentences along those lines.
I wish I could talk, but I know I can't.
Oh, you're like waving your hand at the spot. Oh.
Maybe at the, at the end I can talk.
You're worrying.
And I would agree, Bill, that there, there's some refineries needed on those goals and the implementation strategies.
Well, we've had, we've had, you know, twelve years since that was written.
Right.
Do we have any, is there any difference in our perspective in terms of what, what we hope to see the town achieve, in the direction that, that as the planning commission, you know, we're going to espouse? Strongly recommend, we don't have our head fully around all of it yet.
I play the lesson, right, from the last two years, now can you move forward, or how?
Yeah.
And I wanted to forward that, since that's what Bill's trying to say, is like, you know.
Yeah.
What direction does, of course, the planning commission gives recommendations to the town council?
Yeah.
Any way to change your own goals strategy, who knows? But, you know, how, what does the planning commission as a body wanna see the town moving forward to, you know? And, and how do we achieve that by these, these six goals, or whatever it is? And again, these are goals, just the goals of objectives, right, and sometimes you don't always hit the mark, sometimes you may exceed the mark. But again, it's just to give you a roadmap, to sort of briefly get to where you wanna be, you know, and.
Can we think of something? Can we just send you notes?
Sure, yeah, just something you wanna add or whatever, and again, I can put it to the goal, and, and then, you know, I can, you know, when I put it in there, I'll probably put it beside it, you know? Who, who presented it, so that we can go through and do a final discussion, you know, which is briefly soon coming, you know?
We got another day before.
I haven't, I haven't even asked that yet.
'Cause I like what Steve said about smart growth, I just don't know how we word that yet, right?
What's the definition, and again, and you all have to concur on the definition, too, you know, I mean, you know, because again, somebody might have one smart growth position, and somebody might have enough.
So equal six.
Equal six would be the one that should be what it should be.
Once we, once we get the overall objectives and goals nailed down, I think I might ask John to distribute copies to you of this implementation status action plan. That we drafted and followed and utilized for at least three or four years, perhaps longer. Once we had completed the 2013 master plan, we stepped back at the beginning and said, you know, it's one thing to write a plan and then put it on the shelf. As opposed to what's it gonna take to implement it and really harvest the, the results of the efforts.
There's no consequences if we don't.
And so what we did was, we created a matrix that was an implementation plan of those objectives, of goals.
Which I forwarded to everybody, everybody should have gotten a copy of that, if not, they're here on, when we first started the master plan process.
We could, you know, we could, if you don't find it, then we could.
Let me know, I think I have my criticism up front, too.
But what that does is, is, is a great way for you to step back and say, okay, here is the effort it took to say, if you want to achieve the goals. Little bit of the town, in the community, that you outlined in, as your primary objectives, what's it gonna take to get there? And so, what are our, what's our best thinking in terms of getting that? And so, we literally, we kept up, just the better part of about four years, or whatever. But it helps you get your head around it, and say, if you're saying that's the goal, here's a fair amount of thought in terms of what it's gonna take to achieve that.
Steps to get to that goal.
It's more realistic, it, it's more practical.
Right, than the master plan, so, master plan is just an umbrella for everything.
Right.
And it's tough to capture all that, uh, in one document, and, and have it be on the end, so I think Bill's exactly right, and I think that's a, a great, a great tool as well.
So what's the best way to use, that obviously, we didn't have our, our whole commission here, or Misses Mills, what's the best way to use the time between now and our next meeting? And what should our focus be, and the approach we take in that meeting, catch everybody up and to.
Maybe it's looking at the matrix in this ultimately, you know, I mean, my, my, my goal is to start trying to, start with chapters, I was gonna try to attack the housing element. As one of the chapters, not that I'm gonna have that ready for April, but, you know, trying to sort of get that started, and then start working on the final draft document, and sort of. Start making modification changes, and then just bring that to you guys for possible adoption, or possible referral to the town council. And I'm not sure if we're gonna do that as one big document, if we're gonna do those chapters going to the town council for them to, to look at, or if it's just as a front line.
Did you also send out a copy of this?
Yeah, that was the, that was the, 'cause that's out of date now, and that's.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's two years behind.
Yeah, it's so behind.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was all sent down as well.
Okay, what else can we accomplish? That takes fifteen minutes.
Define smart growth? Define smart growth, I need to think about that, that seems like a big thing to define right now. I did have a question about the maps real quick, on some of them, there's, like, existing zoning, it has a whole bunch of zones, but then it's not. Okay, existing, apparently, is not encompassing land use, there's not all the zones that are on the existing zoning, is, is that because? They're not, they need to be changed, or they need to be changed in the other way?
Can you answer the question again, did we try to get to the theme of your thought game?
I know, it's, it's, and it's hard, 'cause the map, you know, it's so tiny, it's squares, but on the existing zoning, it looks like we have all of our zones that we have in our town code. But then when we go to designated comprehensive land use, which is three miles down, it does not have all of the zones that we have.
That's not a zoning map.
That's not a zoning map, it's just in general, 'cause it has something called transitional commercial.
Which is NPE.
Oh, that is NPE, oh, okay.
Well, no, because transitional is just going from one zone to another zone, so some of it is NPE, some of it's LC.
Okay.
So it's.
I was just confused.
'Cause if you look at the, all the way to South Main, that's right at the top of the circle, that's what I was talking about earlier. Where the deposit property, where it comes CC, that, that's joint properties down Main Street, possibly come all LC, 'cause that would be consistent, consistent with what's there already.
Okay, thank you, I'm just, can you use those other names?
'Cause again, so that, and looking at South Main, for prime example, and that's why I sort of recommended that being all LC. Because if that annexation of that, of that other parcel comes in, which is OPE. Now we have OPE, LC, CC. Instead of having OPE, residential, LC, CC, it's like.
It's consistent.
It's consistent. Creating, instead of creating a residential buffer between this parcel and that parcel and this parcel, it's like, you know, this corridor is now LC. And, and again, that will, that will facilitate, maybe it becomes a lawyer strip or something like that, you know, where there's, you know, a bunch of independent businesses that might run out of those houses.
Like lawyers, architects, engineers, yeah, businesses that not industry, or it's not a crime.
'Cause again, that's why I feel like that shouldn't be CC down there, because again, it gets down to, parcels are so, so small, you can't really put CC use on such a small parcel.
What, do you know when the traffic circle is going, is that soon?
Uh, I think it's supposed to start, um.
I saw a sign.
The spring or something.
The spring. 'Cause that'll be a, that'll really be a big change for that section.
Yeah, we just got a municipal parking lot pretty ready to go, too, I don't know, they got a couple more rounds to put up, I think it'll be open.
That was nice. But it didn't make it anything else, that's better than talking about zones. That might be too much to go to and talk about.
Well, I think we're still grappling with the reality of modifying, if you feel the need.
Yeah.
What's presented and how it's presented in this chapter four, to be appropriate for what we're gonna take going forward. And realizing, it's gonna be out there in twelve years, you know, and who knows what, I don't wanna be overplaying it.
Are you done?
It's gonna, it's gonna be crazy, I think, it's gonna be fierce.
So then we just have to, I feel bad, I feel like we're creating a work ethic, because that all of the new things have to be put in, and we're gonna send you our notes on goal. Is there anything we can do to make your job easier on this topic?
Well, I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll get through this. Something maybe changes every single.
Just leave me alone.
It's a lot of work.
I get it.
So, that's why we're two years behind schedule, because again, COVID did as well, that was part of it, you know, and, and just, there's. Most towns hire a consultant to do this.
That's excessive.
Excessive.
Do we have an independent person who's sure, to moderate, or?
We gotta secure the date first, we're gonna do it tonight, I think, and then I can reach out to try to get a moderator, I wasn't gonna reach out to try to get a moderator. It was not a moderator, it's a.
Now you gotta reach them up.
Why didn't know, 'cause like, I was wondering if you kinda have to put dates on there, like, you know, you have to reserve a place, and you have to, you people settle dates.
One or two months.
Yeah.
But I, I need to have a date before I can ask somebody to come be here.
Are, are you looking, or are you gonna reach out to Roxanne, when you were billed with the dilemma of the twenty second date and the?
Oh, yeah, for our next meeting.
For the issue as to whether we make that sure activity our agenda, or we move it, or, I mean, is.
'Cause is there anything coming up, I mean, 'cause I think that is the priority, and I think you guys agree, and the mission focus as much as we can on that, I mean, or unless there's something really.
I'm sure that there's something that some engineer will probably wanna have in your, I mean, to, to process, but, so, frankly.
In April, if it were.
So again, if I don't have it by April seventh, it doesn't go on yet, and so I can stick to that, you know? Again, currently, I think, plans that are in currently, I think we're getting possibly to a level, so we might be able to waive, that planning issue, but if it is, it is. You'll just have to wait, and again, I might make some adjustments then, that, you know, in June, maybe I'll allow somebody to come forward to get me the material two months in advance, because of the, the missing of that meeting, you know? Or, you know, or let's say move up to April, possibly, normally, it won't be moving up, but, you know, it's, I, I think, I think it is important, and we should be at this meeting.
Yeah.
To be involved, so I, I think, I'll speak to Roxanne, but I, I think that, I think that that will be first, I, I, so, and we'll just have to work forever.
I think so. I think we're realizing it's, it's bigger, you know, than before, and then the specificity of what's changed, what do I keep the same?
It's a critical chapter to be on.
Oh, it's, it's a hard, it's probably the most.
Do you beg?
I do.
No.
Did you beg?
Ten of it, he can beg if he wants to or not.